Yes, we do.
Yeah. Thank you all for attending the regular planning board meeting of the City of Laconia. It is Tuesday, December 1st, 2015. It is 6:30, and so we can begin. And I call the meeting to order at 6:30. Roll call. Colina, would you please do the roll call?
Mike Colani.
Here.
Jay Tivnan.
Yeah.
Phil Contardo.
Yep.
Don Witter.
Here.
Kevin Jimenez.
Here.
Edwin Monas.
Here.
Charlie St. Clair.
Here.
And Jerry Hough.
Thank you very much. And at the table we have with us this evening our planning director, Shannon Saunders, and assistant director, Brandy Loughlin. We have a quorum. Let me just think now. Regular members, regular, regular, regular. Jerry's not here. He's a regular. And who else is not here?
That's it.
We can't do Gail. It's just Jerry is just the regular that's not here. Then because last week, you voted, Mike, and the other Mike voted and Charlie didn't. Charlie, would you, as an alternate, be a voting member this evening?
Whatever you desire, Mr. Chair.
Wow.
I'd be happy to do it.
Well, thank you very much. Presentations, we have no presentations this evening, no extensions, no continued public hearings. So we'll move right into public hearings. And first, we need to have the application accepted. It's application PL 2015-0126SP. It's for 523 through 571 Main Street. MBL 442-142-7, proposal to change the use from church to professional offices. Do you represent that the application is complete and ready to go to public hearing?
Yes, it is.
Given that, I would like to request a motion from the board to accept the application.
Motion to accept.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of accepting the application, please raise your right hand. Any opposed? Passes unanimously, and the application is accepted, and we can begin the process. First, we will recognize for the applicant, Mr. Stephen Smith.
Mr. Chairman and planning board members, Stephen Smith, Steve Smith and associates, here tonight representing Lake Region Mental Health Center Incorporated, doing business as Genesis Behavioral Health. And the property is at 523 and 571 Main Street. We can do a quick site walk if you'd like to, because it's right out this window here over the, underneath the parking garage over there. We're here tonight for a change in use request. And I heard the chairman talking a little earlier, because of the size of the change in use is why we're here before the board. It's over 10,000 square feet. I have a plan on the board that you've probably seen portions of this, or someone has, when the church came in. I've modified it somewhat, but the bottom of the plan is Main Street. And this is Deacon Street East. This is the building, and this location here with the parking garage over it, this is the parking in the rear. Underneath the parking garage, this is the area we're talking about where the church now is, occupies the space. And Regina Nato is also here with me tonight from Normanton, Cheney and O'Neill, who is the legal counsel for Genesis Behavioral Health. This is tax lot 442-142-7. We're requesting a change in use to, from the church to professional office space under Article 5, Section 235, Table 1. It's a permitted use in the downtown riverfront district. The facility will support clinical practice offices, administrative offices, individual doctors' offices, along with an onsite pharmacy. All use is allowed under the professional office space regulation and your ordinance. We're not requesting any waivers or any conditional use permits. There will be no changes made to the site plan itself. The exterior, there will obviously be interior improvements made. Building is being worked on and designed by, let me see, Ward Delia. The general contractor, CCI, is involved in the project, and they're working through those modifications for the building to support the uses that they want in the building, recognizing they have to work with the fire department and code enforcement officer. To me, current life safety codes and those types of issues that go along with a new use within a building.
What's your timetable? I know we have completion dates and things, but is it going to be a long one, a short one?
I believe they would like to get started on the improvements as soon as possible. I mean, they called me two days before the filing deadline and couldn't wait for the next meeting, which would have, actually, we were looking at January for our meeting based on our filing date, but because during the TRC meeting, there was real no substantial comments of any type at all, we didn't even hold a TRC meeting because the department heads were pretty much satisfied of the change in use and what was happening. We were able to come in in the December meeting. So they're anxious to move forward. They have to get the design done and get the building permits necessary through the town before they can start the work. It's something that's going to move forward following whatever the outcome is tonight, hopefully. But I do not know the exact timetable on the construction side of it itself.
Are there plans? They have those two buildings that they're in now, one on Church Street and one on North Main Street?
You know, you know more about that than I do. I didn't even know they had a second building. I haven't talked with them to know, I'm assuming they're going to consolidate there.
Just curiosity, as to the effects on the downtown business environment.
Rather than tell you something that I don't really know, I'm not sure. I would assume that...
Steve, how'd you come up with 153 parking spaces? What does that comprise of? How many?
Well, actually, that came from the planning department. I didn't even calculate that, because we're in that downtown parking core area. We do have 36 parking spaces that are dedicated to the building itself within the parking garage on what would be the southerly end.
Okay.
And then there are roughly, I counted them, I went up and counted them, I think there's 98 parking spaces in the first and second floor, so 196 parking spaces there. There's like 21 spaces in the back of the building. So I think my calculations were roughly 36 plus 216 parking spaces onsite.
Thirty, yeah, how much were they?
Thirty-six that belong to the bottom section of the building, the commercial...
And the rest are available for this operation?
Yes.
Okay. You mentioned a pharmacy or something like that. What kind of medications would they be dispensing?
Well, it's my understanding the pharmacy is for their practice, not really a public pharmacy. That was what I was told. They have a, they see in a week's period roughly 175 patients. Their offices open at 8:00 in the morning until 8:00 p.m. at night. Adults are usually onsite and visit the facility between 8:00 and 3:00 p.m., and then children are from 3:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. That's how it operates. And I've been told from them that the majority of their patients in this core area here walk to their facility. That was the information they gave me.
Will the, will the church be displaced completely? The church is moving out?
Church is moving out. Yes. As I say, there's no site changes, no impacts to the environment, basically, for stormwater drainage and that kind of stuff, because we aren't making any changes out there whatsoever. Fire department and the public works department, water department have reviewed it, and as far as I know, have no concerns relative to what we're doing. And because the property is within the commercial core parking overlay district, which allows an exemption for changes of use for parking, it's pretty straightforward. You're going to see some improvements in the inside of the building. I don't believe they're making any changes to the exterior at this point, at least they haven't been told that they are.
And when the sign comes down, that's the church sign now, it's a very prominent one and very nice looking.
Well, they haven't instructed me on the sign, so they'd have to go through that sign permit with the town and meet that regulation. I'm not really sure at this moment.
Okay.
So I'm assuming if there's no, if there's no site work, there's no security required for...
Correct.
We do have one minor change on the plan, and that's on a butter, budding tax lot number, I guess.
Okay. Any other information at this time? Now I'll ask the staff.
I'd say it's pretty straightforward.
Would the staff like to weigh in?
Yes. Steve is correct in that we did not have a TRC meeting, as after all the departments reviewed the plans and application is submitted. The only requested plan change was to, which is included here under Plan Revision A, was to correct a block number for in a butter, in a budding lot. One typo.
We do that on purpose. Gives you something, no, I'm only...
Keep us on our toes. The, all of the work is interior. Any new signage will be required to come for permits, as always. The parking situation, it is in the commercial core parking overlay district, so they are exempt from providing the required parking spaces. I will say that I think the calculated number in the staff review actually was based on a different use, on a different line, so actually the required parking spaces would be much lower, be 92, not 153, if they were not exempt. Given that they are exempt, that really, you know, doesn't play in here. So we would recommend approval with just that one extreme minor plan revision.
Are revisions, did it affect any notifications, anybody or...
No, no, everyone was notified correctly, and the butters were listed correctly.
Excellent. Then why don't we ask, are there any butters here that would like to address the board? I see no butters. Are there any other taxpayers in the City of Laconia that would like to address the board on this application? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing at 6:42.07. New clock.
I see that.
Yeah, it's very good. With the public hearing being closed, is there any general discussion that the board would like to have before we go to a motion?
I have a question.
Sure.
Maybe I should have run out to the audiences in a butter. But I'm just curious, the times are eight to eight, and obviously, my question is about Because we have, you know, this parking lot here is pretty much full for the day. I still don't know where they all come from, but they fill it up. I don't know, and it's my fault, I've never really walked up into the garage during the day to see the availability of spaces there. Maybe you could tell me that.
Yeah, I mean, at this point, because the top deck floor is closed, the garage is actually not being used much. I think people are still wary of it, so right now, the second floor deck is probably half empty.
And the tops closed, why?
Structural issues with the ramps that we're getting fixed. But typically, before all of that structural issue, and it was closed for a while, and people got used to parking in other spaces, the second floor would probably be about three quarters full. The top floor, usually myself and one other downtown business owner parked there, and that was it.
Because I remember when the church went in, and the questions came up about parking, it was that the majority of their use was going to be on Sundays, weekends, or after hours, that type thing. Here, it's a totally different situation, so I'm just, I guess I'm curious. It said that most of the people walked to it, most of the...
Yeah, I asked them about that, and they said the majority of their clients walked, they're walking clients that walk in from the neighborhood in the area.
I didn't see it in there, but maybe I missed it. About staff, how many staff people do they have working there?
They have roughly 100 staff members, I think.
So that top deck of the garage could fit their staff comfortably.
Could. And they have 36 of their own spaces.
Yeah, I see that there, but that's just an awful lot. So again, they're not under any restrictions because of the downtown core, and I get that. But, you know, it's just something to think about. I'm sure they're going to be very community, you know, friendly and do all that stuff, but it is a concern of retailers in the area, because people have been talking about that, so.
But again, I just want to reiterate, that top floor of the parking garage, I know it's not open now, but even when it was open, two or three cars, and I think there's close to 100 spaces up there, so...
There was 98 spaces excluding the 30, the, what is it, 15 or 16, or I guess, yeah, 18 parking spaces that are dedicated to the...
So there's over 100 total?
Yes.
So there's over 100 total in that top deck that could comfortably fit all their staff, and wouldn't displace anything that wasn't displaced, or, you know, already, so...
I understand. No, and maybe by the, when they get in there, the staff's fully functioning there, maybe that'll be fixed, maybe?
Yes. Since I liked parking on that top deck, I have been asking lots of questions about when that top deck would be open again, and my understanding is that it would be as soon as, they're in the middle of engineering reviews and still figuring out what's wrong with it, and that the intent is to get it fixed, yeah.
I think that the, our client has talked with the city manager about that anyways, because I think that was a concern of theirs, hey, if we're going to spend all this money and you're going to...
Charlie, don't we, on time, review the snow days and stuff like that, the utilization of the garage? Remember that was, came up years ago?
Yeah, we...
When was you coming in?
We looked at the utilization of the garage, and actually, this parking lot, when did we do that? At some point, it was several years ago, yeah, and tried to determine who was parking where, and in fact, if I remember correctly, it was not when I was here, but around 2000, there was a full parking study of downtown that highlighted the parking spaces. And I know that we've lost maybe a dozen or so parking spaces since then, but there have been studies downtown.
And it's supported if there was snow, or blizzards and stuff like that, people could park on there and...
Right. Yeah, 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 that wouldn't affect it, yeah.
Up on the top, you're talking about?
About the whole garage in the macro sense. I don't think it was, I don't think I understood what floor it was, but it was the whole garage could handle those type of situations.
Yes, yeah.
Is the 100 staff, is that like over the course of the three shifts, or four shifts, or however it is?
You know, I just asked them what their staff loading was. I don't, I do not know that.
It does seem, that's right. If they operate eight to eight, generally, that isn't the hours that...
Can't imagine they'd all work at the same time, but...
Yeah, they all wouldn't work at the same time.
So this facility will be in addition to the facilities they already have, correct? They have Genesis?
I don't believe so, but I'm...
Oh, they're moving. Oh, okay, I was going to say...
I believe they're consolidating. I think that's the whole reason.
I think they're moving out of their former digs and moving into this one.
Yeah, yeah, I think so. And then some big law firm's going to take the other one? Any other questions?
All those ugly rumors.
Yeah. Then the chair will entertain a motion on this application.
I have a question. What was the amendment? I didn't, I didn't hear what it was.
Just one plan revision that's included in the back, Plan Revision A. The block number on the plan for the butter must be corrected. So on page two.
On the back of this sheet, on that one right there, yeah.
Yep.
And that's already in there?
That, yep, so when you make the motion, as usual, and you list the date, you can also, if you want to, say, reference Plan Revision A.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And is Plan Revision January 5th, 2015, right, or 16?
16.
Thank you.
I'm quick, but I'm not that quick.
Well, we belated if it was 2005, what I said.
I might be in denial.
Then is there a motion to accept this application?
I'll make a motion.
Well, thank you, sir.
I move that we accept the application, subject to the, and grant conditional approval with the following conditions. One, project completion deadlines, Plan Revision, January 5th, 2016. Two, My Law Final Plans, February 2nd, 2016. Three, completion, December 6th, 2016. Two A, Plan Provisions. Three A, B, C, D, E, and F, conditions that must be met prior to final approval and recording of the My Law. Four, conditions to be completed prior to the start of work, four A. Five, conditions applicable during and after constructions, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and six, as-built plans.
Extremely well done. Thank you.
Indeed, huh?
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, raise their right hand. Any opposed? Passes unanimously, and outstanding. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Regina.
I need to get some tissues.
Okay. Do you want to ask to... This is, the next one's just an application acceptance. We don't need to wait. I was going to inform the general public that this next is just the acceptance for an application to begin the legal process. Other than accepting it, we're not taking any action. And this is on the 1106 Union Avenue tree issue. So I would like to...
Could you explain what's going on? I don't have a...
Oh, why do we accept it? Why don't you check?
We have received an application for a site plan amendment to remove the tree that is right at the corner of the driveway and Union Ave.
Okay.
That's it.
That's it.
That's it.
And what we'll do just tonight is accept that application to begin the TRC process. So this is an application PL 2015-0131SP amendment, 1106 Union Avenue, proposal of tree removal for safety purposes.
Chair, I will recuse myself from this, even accepting this.
Yes, thank you very much.
Motion to accept.
Okay.
Well, let's see, does the staff represent that the application is complete?
Yes, it is.
And will the motion to accept, and there's second? Motion's been made in second, and any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, raise their right hand. Any opposed? And that is fine. And thank you.
And what is the application due?
So I have one question for you guys. As part of the city council process to review this issue, they requested that the city's on-call engineer, McFarland Johnson, complete a traffic study report regarding the safety issue and this tree. Site distance, basically, whether or not the tree blocked the site distance of folks turning out of that driveway.
Is that a traffic report or a site distance report?
It's a traffic report that relates to the site distance.
Okay, so it's not, there are cars and that stuff, oh, we already have that?
Right.
Okay.
So the question to you guys is, would you accept that as a third-party report? Or do you want an independent third-party report from a traffic engineer done by, through our typical process of going through the Conservation District?
Could you repeat again?
Yep.
Who's going to do this?
So a report has been completed by McFarland Johnson, which is the DPW's on-call traffic engineer. Do you want a more independent report from someone not on the city's payroll? The process for that is the applicant would give us money for this report, we would put it in an escrow account, we would contact Belknap County Conservation District, they would get an engineer on board who would review the situation. That engineer would then bill the city, but we would pay that money out of the third-party account. It wouldn't come from taxpayers' money. And that, that process is really an independent third-party process. Or are you comfortable accepting McFarland Johnson's report?
We'll agree to...
What does the staff, go ahead.
You reject on yourself.
No, excuse me, I didn't reject myself. I can still talk about it. I said I won't vote, but I can still talk.
Okay.
You have to talk as a member of the audience.
Well, I'll be happy to talk as a member of the audience.
You can't tonight, though.
Well, we're all talking about it, so either we're going to, I'm talking about this study, this traffic study.
This is application acceptance, so...
Then we got to all stop talking.
What does the staff feel?
So wait, I just want to clarify. So in application acceptance, it's not, it's not open to the public as a public hearing? It's just a discussion before the board? And since you've recused yourself, you now are a member of the public, so you can't speak...
I refuse myself from voting, not as a member of the plan.
But you recuse yourself from deliberation on that item. It's, it all wraps up into one ball. You can't talk about it and then, and then not vote.
This is...
Bullshit.
No, 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 no.
Come on, Charlie. Don't talk like that.
Let me explain to you, that this accepts the application to begin the process. It will come back to this board for a public hearing, and at that time, you can decide on any type of...
And Charlie, let me just say too, I'm not going to talk about the contents of that report, I just want to talk about the process.
Right, and I, but we're all asking questions about the traffic study, and all I wanted to do is make sure something was included in the traffic study. That's all I wanted to mention, that's all.
My question was clarity on the traffic.
Right, and that's what I wanted too.
And I understand it, I understand...
Perhaps you shouldn't have been so quick to recuse yourself.
We already have numbers for the traffic number cars, apparently not.
This tree is too controversial. Here's my thought. I'm going to give it to you.
It's an old plant.
We, the study that was put together, I think was put together hastily, I don't know, but whatever it is, we need an independent study paid for by the city, funded by the applicant, to make, to make sure that we're accurate with respect to what we're doing, because we want to make some important decisions about what happens here. And I'll give you the report from the city council when we do the liaison reports as to what the city council did. But I think that we need two reports. I think we need a report on the, a traffic study report to tell us whether this tree really is danger or not, or if there's ways to avoid it. And we need an arborist to come in and tell us what the health of this tree is for the future. Because, you know, it looks healthy. I don't want to lose that tree, but if it's got a two-year lifeline, and we're going to take it down in two years anyway, we might as well just face reality. So I think we need an arborist, and I think we need an independent traffic report, and that ought to be conditions of, that the applicant must meet in, to get us further down the road with respect to this. Their application...
So let me, let me just, let me just follow up on that, because there's a process for requiring these reports.
Okay.
The process is that the planning board has to make the decision to require them. What I'm going to do is I'm going to contact the applicant and say, in order to expedite, we have heard from the planning board that they want these reports. If you'd like to expedite, you know, it'd be great if we could get this ball rolling so that these reports could be ready when we hear this in January. He could choose not to do that and wait until the January planning board meeting.
Okay.
And at that point, you guys would then require it. But at this point in the stage, at the application acceptance, it's really just a...
So you're just trying to get a sense of the board of what we want?
That's right, that's right, yeah, yeah.
So let me see if I'm clear with your saying. If the tree is not going to hold up for more than two years, we should get rid of it. But if the tree could hold up for the next 100 years, but it's a safety issue, a sightline issue, then what are you saying?
Well, no, I think, I don't think we can talk about the merits. I think we just want to talk about what reports we need in order to make our decision.
One's independent of the other, I think.
All right, maybe I spoke too broadly.
You need the reports more narrowly. You need the reports before you can do anything else.
We need a traffic report, and in my view, we need a traffic report and an arborist report.
Okay.
That's my view.
David, what, the traffic report has to be more than just sight, line of sight.
Absolutely.
That's my problem.
I, I'm not an expert in this, Charlie. You probably know more than I do, and I, you know a lot more than I do. But all I'm asking for is, I'm keeping it narrow and focused. I want, I want a traffic report, I want, and you're listening to everybody here, so...
And I've heard one person speak about the need for an independent third-party traffic report. Is that a consensus of the board, that we want a third, basically, an independent third-party report, a second report?
My question to you is, and you brought it up, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but why would we think about either or, either this guy or the other guy? Why would we even be talking about that?
Because, because we have a process that we followed for every other application through Belknap County Conservation District. It wasn't followed in this case. We went with our city engineer, which is new. We haven't always had a city traffic engineer, and he's new as in two or three months ago. So if we're concerned about the perception...
So your suggestion is we go back to the way it was before this one here, the Conservation?
To be honest with you, my opinion is that I feel that this report was done quite independently. I feel that, that it was, I don't, I don't feel that there was any bias by the engineering firm, but again, there's the perception of bias, which you guys have a better handle perception of bias, which you guys have a better handle on living here than I do. So, that's why I threw the question out to you guys.
Well, the consistent and conservative approach is, as David indicated, and that is what we would do with every applicant, that there's a question, that we would require a third-party report. And given that there already is one, that we don't know about it, but it... To give the complete transparency and the perception, then I think that, can we vote on that requirement this evening? Or do you want to speed things up?
I think we could. Application acceptance is what pieces of the application are required for it to be complete. So, if we want to give direction as to what pieces we would want and what's in them, I think that is absolutely clear.
So, let me see if I understand. So, a report has been done, a study has been done, a report has been given to the city council.
Correct.
Correct. And there are some that claim that it is biased, one way or the other.
Well, it could be...
The perception is there.
I understand.
I'm not sure that there's a claim, but there may be down the road.
So, we're suggesting to get another study that the applicant is going to pay for...
Correct.
That whom we will commission an engineering firm to perform...
Correct.
In order to eliminate any potential for a claim of bias.
And I believe the planning board selects the...
The planning staff does, yes.
The planning staff selects the...
No, the Belknap County Conservation District actually selects the firm, and that's why... That's what makes it an unbiased decision, unbiased.
But it's not the applicant that's sort of...
That's right, it's not the applicant, yep.
Yeah.
And the study that's been done was paid for by the city to their consulting engineer.
Correct.
So, I'm not sure...
But the... See, the city council doesn't have the authority on land planning. That is here, and so, during the report that our council will give to us, they make recommendations and pass documents asking us to do different things, to consider different things, so...
So, who ordered the study?
They did. They can do anything like that they want.
Oh, okay.
But it's this board, this board, that determines under state law, land use. So, having a discussion, my opinion, and the way I will vote, is that we, in the motion, ask that we do hire, in the traditional form, two independent consultants that the applicant pays for, one being the traffic study engineer to assess that side of it, and the other being an arborist that can tell us about the health of that tree and has... What has been done, has that impeded the health of the tree?
And is that a motion, did you say?
So, we're still open... We're still open for conversation.
Yeah.
But I would make that motion.
Can we request... Okay. Can we request a blind study on just that section of road?
Can you define blind study?
Blind study, just, you know, have someone come in and give us their opinion on safety issues and unsafe... You know, what they think of that section of road...
Yep.
Without pointing out specifically that tree.
What section?
Where the tree happens to be.
So, just that entrance?
No, no, just, you know, quarter mile, half mile, within that range.
Okay.
Because I think what happens is when you specify that tree, it's gonna be... People look at it one way or the other, and they... But if you're just looking at a section of road, can you just tell us what the safety issues or non-issues are?
We've had numerous traffic...
What I'm thinking?
We've had numerous traffic studies of that particular area.
Okay.
I don't think we... I don't see the need of redoing a traffic study for this area.
Yeah, and where the application is specific to this tree.
And the application is specific to this tree and this entrance.
Right, I'm not sure that we can cause the application to be for a general traffic study.
God, see, they're using as an exit, not as an entrance. And that's my... I know, and that's my question, Shannon, is that when you do your traffic study or you instruct them, can they also... These experts look at changing that from an exit to an entrance? Will that impede their business plan so much if they have people going out the other way?
I think that it's too early in the process to require that. I think once we get our third engineer report on the safety issue, we can add to it with the applicant here and the public.
We could do that.
That's what I wanna ask.
We don't look at it that way, Charlie. What we look at is...
And we can do that in January.
Is it a viable entrance or a viable exit? And what's the impact for what's inside that development?
Well, what they're saying is it's only an exit.
And then we don't look at it as, you know...
But they're saying it only can be used as an exit.
Well, that was a requirement here, because of total site plan.
Yeah, because that's the way it's started, that's the way they get approved.
So, the planning board made that the exit?
Yes, they did.
We're getting way ahead of ourselves.
And we need... We really need to stop this conversation, because this could jeopardize the decision of the planning board in the future. Please.
Why don't we just give the motion to Don?
So, we're comfortable with the discussion, and the motion, Don, you making a motion...
I second it.
Which is to accept the application and require that the applicant do the two studies.
Do the two studies.
In our normal fashion.
In our normal fashion, which they pay for.
Okay.
Excellent. Motion's been made. Seconded, any discussion?
Yes. Are we sure we can make this motion comfortably tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
Legally, I feel comfortable with it, yep.
All right, that's all I'm asking.
If that's your question, yeah.
That's my question.
Yep.
Okay.
So, motions been made, seconded, discussion? And I'll call the question, all those in favor, raise their right hand. Excellent. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously, and this would be for our January meeting, aimed for our January meeting?
Correct, yep.
Will that give the consultants enough time to do this work?
I think so.
Because if not, it is far more important to allow them the time to do it than it is to rush a meeting day.
Yep, we'll schedule it for January. That's our typical process after acceptance. If... I think that then gives the applicant the chance to present. If the reports aren't done by then, we'll just... We have the right to continue it, so...
Oh, okay.
But I think they would be done.
I saw some cane on the sidewalk. Are we digging that sidewalk? I don't know what's going on. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I can talk about that in my planning report.
So, just as a sidebar, can you make sure that Jerry is fully informed of this?
Yes, yes.
It may not go in January anyway, given the schedule we have it on.
Oh, okay.
It hasn't even done TRC one yet.
Very true.
You got the scrubs on, or grubs on, what do you call it?
Just one person at a time?
Just don't take this the wrong way. Can we clarify when someone recuses themselves at this point?
That's what I was gonna just say, I was just gonna...
Can we understand exactly what he is allowed... He or she is allowed to do and not to do?
He's not allowed to do anything except...
Apparently not, yeah, so...
No, under the RSAs, when a one of us, the only person that can recuse is yourself. Even with a full vote of this board, you can't require an individual to recuse themselves. Once they have recused themselves at the beginning, then the process as defined by state law is that you move from the table into the audience, and...
And then I couldn't talk, because there's no public. But I... Mr. Chair, if I may say, so that's my mistake. First of all, Don, I apologize for saying what I said. I should've said BS, because that's accepted publicly. But I should've, and I would've appreciated some direction from you, Mr. Chair. I should've abstained from the vote and not recused myself. Now, could've I done that?
No, you had to recuse yourself from the entire...
Why can't I abstain from voting?
Because that's not the law, Charlie.
You can abstain.
You can abstain.
Now, if he didn't recuse himself...
You can abstain from the vote.
If you didn't recuse yourself and you stayed in the diet...
You could've voted.
And then you could've voted no, or you could've abstained from the vote. You had to alter...
But you don't abstain until the vote is taken.
I understand that, but I could've abstained.
Correct.
So, that's my screw-up.
You did, you did abstain.
No, I recused.
So, that's a... Could've been a different world.
That's a different... That's... See, I wish I'd known that, because I wish, you know... That's why I said to you, Mr. Chair, I wish... It's my fault, I should've picked up on that myself, but I wish somebody had said...
I don't think if you recuse, you can't vote, period.
If you recuse, you cannot not... You cannot be part of the conversation. You have removed yourself from being a planning board member...
I wasn't hanging myself.
When you recuse yourself.
And why you do this, and why each of us...
No, no, so now, I won't do it again, I'll just abstain.
Please, let me explain, so everyone can understand, that when you do this, you do it so that it removes from the process a legal opportunity for the applicant after our total decision is made to go to court and say that they want to have the decision of the planning board reviewed...
I agree.
Because of this person did not recuse themselves.
But see, what I'm saying, and this was the whole point, is that I still wanna be part of the discussion. My feelings are well-known on whether it's his topic or any other topic, I have nothing to hide. But I will not soil the vote, so to speak, by voting. I will abstain from the vote, but I will not shut myself off from the discussion. And that's what I did by recusing myself. I was unaware of the discussion.
You've been abstaining, yeah.
Yeah. So, I feel by abstaining, that would... I'm not gonna, like I just said, dirty the vote because of pre-thoughts or whatever. I'm just gonna abstain from the vote.
Yes, that sounds like what you're aiming for, is to abstain.
Kalina has some information on recusal versus abstention, so she'll send that out to everyone, so you all have a copy of that.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, have a memo on my desk tomorrow morning.
She will, don't try... Don't challenge her.
We leave it for you.
Okay, let's... Why don't we close the discussion on this and move on to new business? Our first item is the capital improvement program, presentation by the CIP, recommendations of the planning board. CIP is a subcommittee of the planning board, and our vice chair, Bill Contardo, is the chairman of the capital improvement committee. Now, I don't believe that he needs to stand up in front of you and give the report.
No, no, no.
No, I think... I thought Mike Foot was gonna be here tonight, and he's a very strong member of our committee, and he am's on our committee, and I don't think that's... So, him and I are at for the committee. What the CIP does is we get together annually, the request goes out to all the department heads to see what their needs are, and they submit what their needs would be, they put in the dollar amount they would want it to be, with their requesting, whether it be vehicles, whether it be like DPW, work, that kind of... What we do is we look at every line item, and individually, we rank that line item. We go off and we, on our own, not influenced by what the other person's doing, and we rate them. Those ratings are pulled together after the... This actually happens after the applicant has vented as far as what he needs, his needs are, and anybody else with them, and a pretty good job inventing the applicants. And then at that point, then we go into the rating system. All those numbers are pulled together, and we do it for five-year projection, and then they're added up and accumulated, and then they're put... They're ranked accordingly by the number of totals. The total being the total points that they received. Each line item by each individual could receive up to 25 points, could receive zero points, could receive five points, could... Whole myriad amount of different ways of reporting that. And so, these are the results of the accumulation. This process goes on for about two or three months, and they... Each department comes in and makes their presentation, and what you have here is the results of that rating system. And you can see, street repairs, and this basically, it all comes in about the same way every year, unequivocally. But there are some exceptions to it. What we have here is, again, the street repair is the number-one item, and that deals with all the streets that they wanna repair, it's a dollar amount that... They break it down, but it doesn't mean they're gonna repair those particular streets.
Excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Could you tell us what the funding...
Codes.
Yeah, what they stand for. I'm sure there are people here that don't know that.
It's the CR and the EFs.
Okay, EF is the enterprise fund, and CR is...
So, a little explanation, enterprise fund...
Those are funds that are...
That's the water department.
Right, it's accumulated through various rates charged to users.
Exactly, exactly. Okay, go ahead.
So, the CRs come... That funding is really the city's funding, which we say that things come from there. The EF is the enterprise fund, and really that is, those departments, and we rank that... We get into the water department, all of them, they self-fund themselves. So, you get your water bills, your sewer bills, so they have their self-funding, their money comes from what... The way they obtain their money. So, that's EF. Then there's bonds, some bonds we have, we generally... We have like one bond here, then we... Something might go out to bonding, and then if it goes out to bonding, then that's another leg of the process. We don't do that, we don't say, we're getting a bond, we just say, that's what we think that where it should be determined. Remember, when we do all of this, this goes to the city manager and the city council, and then they re-masage it. They look at it, and they could change the priorities if they want, or they can determine some additional or added funding, or lack of funding, or whatever they wanna do. So, we're only one component of it, like I say, but it's an important component, because we do a lot of the understanding of what each department wants, what their needs are. And quite honestly, sometimes I always thought, well, that's gonna go high in the list, and it doesn't come out that way. Sometimes it goes right to the bottom of the list, so it doesn't even make the list. So, remember, this is... We only identified 42 items, and, you know, it could be more that never made the list, you know, never had anything to... Could make that list. But I think, you know, it's a good experience, if you haven't been to CIP, or you haven't seen it in works, you know, I recommend next year, come in, you know, and you'll see that... Pick out a department that you wanna view, how it's... How they've been handled, and how their... The questions they were asked. Many times, the members of the board go out and they look at the different departments, they visit the fire department, DPW, school... Well, we started the school department, you brought up last time here. And we go out and visit these people, and we understand what their needs are, and then we make an understanding of what they want and the priorities on which they need it. Many times, they don't have firm quotes, but that we have to go by what their request. Sometimes you might say, well, you don't really need that amount of money in it, but we really say, that's not our venue, it's not our responsibility to change what they want. It's either accept what they want, rate it accordingly if need be. Any questions on this at all?
I have a question.
I just wanted to add just a couple of things, and that is that one of the things that I learned was, as a taxpayer, even on the board, we usually stand at arms-length to the department heads. I don't know the recreation department head from a box of rocks, but going through the CIP process, you get to learn how they operate, who they are, how they present themselves, the level of professionalism, and it gives you kind of a good idea of how the total city administration works, and it's really been very useful.
And sometimes I just think, is that a legitimate need? And that goes through your mind, too, as you're appraising or evaluating the line item, you know? And many times, they have many line items, and it seems like over the years, the different departments, depending upon how much capitalization they got over the years, the police department, they're pretty much boilerplate, you see so many cruisers, and that's replenishing the fleet, and I think this year was, they wanted guns or something like that.
The only other thing that, that took place during these meetings that I, I don't see any reference to, was that the, the two big items are the radio tower upgrade for the police department and for the fire department. Those numbers, 368,000 and 385,000, those are presumably coming from 100% grant from the federal government. Now, there's been no conversation whether or not, if that grant doesn't occur, what the city council's going to do, but those are, those are big numbers. Aside from the road repairs, those are really the largest numbers that we saw this year.
I'd like to speak, I did it last year with city council, Bob Hamel, and I was on Bill's board. And we went around to each and every department and I was amazed at the amount of money that that girl got the city for the fire department. Because we went through that building and he told, he had, Bob Hamel had the numbers in front of him and what it was going to actually cost the city when it got done. And I was amazed at how little it would cost us. It was, it's quite, it's quite an experience just to do it.
But it's, it's useful to do, it's useful to do. It's a, it's a, it's drudgery.
Right.
It is drudgery, but, you know, it's something that's got to be done.
Is your cap at capital 20,000 for what you consider capital improvement?
I think over 6,000, 10,000, that range.
So you include items that are over 6,000 on this?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's over 5,000 and then there's a certain number of years that it's, has to last as well. Is it five or 10, Bill?
Is that?
5,000 or 10,000, do you remember?
We used, we were at 5 and then we moved it up to 10.
Yeah.
Okay, then maybe 10 then.
I also didn't see improvements for the school district, is that, do they have a separate CIP with the city?
No, what they, well, they have the option to come in. And I think we requested them over the last.
DPW.
He said the.
Schools.
School.
Schools.
Yeah, they used to come in, they used to put a request in, they haven't put a request in for a few years.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's somewhere around five or six years since, since the schools, the schools used to be under this like everybody else with the departments and everything and it, it was such a lengthy process when you included the schools, that they finally got themselves in a position to be considered separately, you know, separate issue.
Which is, which is interesting though, because the schools pay the city for the use of athletic facilities. So the parks and recreation comes in for a new mower for $35,000, but that mower is used to maintain the field that the school uses and the school only throws the city pocket change in order to use those facilities. So I had raised the question, you know, this is a capital expense, really should be assigned to the department for which is receiving the benefit or is delivering the benefit to the community. But the schools, they don't come for any of their capital improvements and they don't come for, they are not assigned the costs associated with maintaining the facilities that the city rents to them. It doesn't make a lot of sense.
Their budgets though are under the control, bottom line control of the, of the city council.
That's right.
So there is, and there is that discussion that takes place there before the city council authorizes the bottom line.
But unfortunately, the, the capital improvements committee, who is representing the community at large, never gets to see that.
And one, and right here, but one, at one time we would get, what would come through would be irrigation system, for example. And that was a very costly expenditure and, but we would vent that out at, at the CIP and, you know, and sometimes it would surface and sometimes it wouldn't because of those reasons.
It was, it was, it came to our attention, not only because of the mowers that they were requiring, but that, I think it was, one of the parks where they wanted to rebuild the tennis courts. And the question was, well, how many people are out there waiting to play tennis because there aren't sufficient courts? And the answer was that the school tennis team uses the courts so much that the general public doesn't get an opportunity to use the courts, that's why they wanted more courts. And I'm saying, wait a second, that doesn't make any sense. So that cost should be assigned to the school district, not to the city.
Yeah, my comments.
That's a, I'm just going to comment that I understand what you're saying, but that's not really a planning board issue.
No, 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 it isn't. I didn't know where it was.
It's a city council issue and it's a school board issue and how funds are allocated. And, you know, the city doesn't have, the city controls how much the schools get, but in the end, how they spend it is, is really up to their own decision. They're really pretty good about informing the city council about what they're doing and keep, because it's up to date, I think there's a good relationship between the school board and the city council, but they're really separate issues. And the issues about who pays for the lawn mowers or who bears the real cost for the lawn mowers or how the tennis courts are used are really not planning board issues. And I understand your concerns, but they're really city council and school board issues.
So I should bring those concerns to the city council?
So I think, well, I don't think you are.
I can, I can, I can, I will bring it up in the course of, I don't think I'm going to do a liaison report on it and I'm going to abstain from a vote on this.
As long as you don't recuse yourself.
So let me explain to you that when the CIP first came into being, all of these kind of things were discussed and, and hammered out. And your discovery is not a new discovery, it's, it's been there a long time. And others have, have looked at it that way also, but when you're informed by the city council and by other people that, that this is the way it's going to be as far as the calculations go, then that's the way it is. So.
I didn't mean to bring this up too.
Pardon?
I didn't bring this up too deep into old wounds.
Well, all you have to do is bring up, all you have to do is bring up schools and talk budget and you're in trouble.
Okay.
Saying anybody's in trouble.
No, no, when I say trouble, I mean you've got a discussion.
Right.
You've got a discussion.
So each department is questioned, what are their needs and sometimes you determine and you say to them, well, you know, do you really need that because maybe DPW should be doing it versus parks and works. So sometimes that gets sorted out because they didn't realize that someone else put in for that money kind of thing.
So I, I think.
So we try to keep, we try to keep it, you know, sameness to the whole process, try to understand what one department's saying compared to the other department and then, and then compare what we hear. And then independently, like I say, every member independently ranks them and each line item has, they have a rating of zero to 25, they can apply. So that number, whatever those numbers are cumulative, and, and I'll be quite honest with you, it never really seems to vary that much from year to year because the needs are what they are now, as far as the tower is concerned or any of that, you know, the need of the tower might be there, but on the other side of it too, maybe people weren't happy with the dollar amount. That's not our, that's not our responsibility to understand the dollar amount and get that money, or get the bids in on that, that's the departments to do that. And if they don't get the bid number in, then it's, then I would assume that the city manager is going to take care of the getting the bids for the, the other line item, so.
I, I have a, one question here and I have to give a little history here and a pat on the back, I suppose. But I think it was somewhere in the neighborhood of eight or 10 years ago, the streets were in pretty deplorable condition in, in the city. And at one of these capital improvements committee meetings, the second or third one that there was, I brought up that we should dedicate $1 million a year that cannot, well, it can be touched, but shouldn't be touched and spent on streets, period. And they started doing that. And to my knowledge, it was only one year that it was a little less than that because there was an immediate need for $250,000 for some urgent item. And then over the years, it's crept, it's crept up a little bit and it's now up to 1, 1,600,000, I see. Along with that, a couple of years later, we also included that a certain percentage of that 1 million, let's say 1,600,000 now, should be spent on sidewalks. And, and that's been going along pretty good on, on the sidewalks, I don't see it here.
The sidewalks are in there, the 50,000.
Okay, sidewalk repair, I, I'm sorry, I missed it. Number 20.
But what does it mean, new sidewalks? Let's repair. So it could be that they have the new sidewalks into the street.
Okay, I see, I missed it here, it's 20, I'm sorry.
Just one clarification for me, and forgive me. This capital improvement budget is coming to the planning board, why?
Because the capital improvements plan under this RSA is a planning board function.
Got it. That was why I raised the issue. Because if the, if the planning board is recommending to the city council that this is what the capital improvement budget should be, and we see flaws in the way in which the budget is prepared, I would think that the planning board would present that to the city council and say, listen, you really got to put in this change because it does not accurately reflect CapEx assignment to the different departments, including the school district. That's why I raised it, I thought that's what it was for.
I think that's perfectly right. I mean, I think that that's right. If there's a, if there's an issue here about any of the recommendations, or you think that there should be a new designation of 43 or a 44, then that's what this process is all about and you should, you should make that, you should make those recommendations now.
Yeah.
Because that's what, what the planning board's duty is, is to make a recommendation to the city council about what the capital improvement projects should be in the upcoming budget and how they should be addressed. That's what their job is.
And the reason that the planning board is involved is because the capital improvements plan should part of, it should be, yeah, looked at under the master plan. So you need to take the master plan and the capital improvements plan and make sure they meld well, and that's our job to then send it up to the council.
Now, the, one of the things that did impress me was that, that Luke from the department, from the public works department, he came in and he prioritized everything that he presented to us, dollar amount, he said, I want, this is the first one I want and the second and the third, the rest of the departments did not. They just kind of threw it on the table and say, you guys make the decision. And truthfully, I mean, Bill, you, we, we ask a lot of questions and they give us a lot of answers, but truthfully, we don't know what the real priorities are, we're only looking at it from the taxpayers' standpoint. But if the department heads came in and said, look, I need this mower, this is the most important thing, I need.
You can make them do that.
Yeah, you asked them.
You can make them do that. You can say, get out of here, this report's crap, come back with a report that prioritizes what, what we need.
In a roundabout way, that does happen. We, when we vent them and we find out what they, what they needs are, and when you have an understanding of the basis of their needs, I think that goes into your scoring. If someone, you think that's, well, that's a shoddy, you know, you know, where'd you get that from, you know, because you got one that's only four years old? You want a new one now because the other department got one? Well, we, I think people view that, they see that and their rankings are recorded. I mean, I know when I rank, if someone is in that, falls in that ballpark, I mean, they get a five from you. Sometimes they get a two, sometimes they get a zero, because I know, I don't, I don't think that's a need. Then you have the departments that come in, they say, I want this, this, this and that. They prioritize. If you're going to rank it, please rank this first, I need this in as priority.
Well, you know, I think, I think the department I'm pointing at mostly is because I think a lot of it is discretionary and that's parks and rec. Because it does not involve safety or fire or police protection or the quality of our roads and our sidewalks, it's recreational facilities, which, you know, if push came to shove, what would you do? Would you put in a new fire station or would you put in a new football field? If you, if you had to choose, what would it be?
We chose the football field first.
Not only that, but parks and rec, these days doesn't just do parks and rec.
I know, I know, which is exactly my point in getting the costs assigned where they belong, because parks and rec should not be managing assets for the school district.
Well, how about the buildings? How about the buildings and the air conditioning?
Yes, absolutely fine.
That's all in parks and rec. That's all in parks and rec.
Are you saying this report is flawed? Because I think it's pretty good.
No, 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 I'm not saying it's, it's, it is absolutely fine within the structure in which it was prepared.
Okay.
I am suggesting that the structure might need some modification and the city council has to.
The ci.
No, no, they do that. No.
Oh, we can do that.
It's the committee that would do that.
Okay.
Or the planning board. And let me say too, that when we had our impact fee analysis completed, that gentleman that did our impact fee analysis looked at our CIP program and said that there was some room to improve and that he would be happy to come back and help us do that. And that's been passed on a couple of times. So if we feel that that's a need at the planning board level, the CIP level, to re-look at our CIP process, we can certainly do that.
That's why.
I think you remember this, Don, last year when we had all the noise problems with the Tower Hill Tavern, I was on the CIP. And I went over to the police department and I said, shouldn't you have some kind of measuring devices for the noise so that we don't keep hearing week, month after month? And Bill said, they're going to vote, they're going to put in what they need. And they put in cruisers, guns and holsters. And I asked Bob Hamel about it, he goes, they know what they need, just because the planning board feels that they, you should have noise measuring devices, doesn't mean that they're going to do it. And that's what happened, right, Bill?
Yeah, and that's beyond our scope. We can't tell a department head.
Right.
Put in for this.
No.
Put in for that, we can't do that. Many times we, I thought, so you get a big, a large truck, you get a 40,000, 35,000 pickup truck instead of a 60,000, 70,000, whatever.
But it is within our purview to say to the department head, when you come in next year, we want you to prioritize what you think is number one, number two, number three, number four.
And that's been done before and some departments do it and some don't, you know?
They know that.
They, they know that.
Why don't we do a review of what our capital improvement program is and what, what, what we can do to make it better? And, and when we get that review done, when we start the capital review report for next year, we'll have that in place, we'll clearly tell the department heads what it is we want and if they don't give it to us, we'll tell them to come back another day with a better report.
So this will actually help them also because to be included in this report is one thing, but the real decision making is between the council and the city manager. The city manager proposes and the council reacts to the city manager's proposal. And the clearer he and the council understand the wants, the better, more often that they'll, they'll get it approved. But this is advisory under, under the RSAs and it was created so that all the communities in the states, the citizens would have an opportunity to present. And so that it, if the selectmen or the council chooses to ignore it, at least the, the citizens have said, hey, we want this, we want this.
We had years that the council, whoever, completely ignored everything that we had in the sheet. We went through like three or four years that way. And finally, we said, hey, look at, you know, if you don't want, if you don't want to take what we, what we've gone through and take that as valid information, then what are we doing this for? And then finally, they started looking at it a little bit closer and say, well, yeah, yeah, that's right. What we do is, but eventually they do. We vet out the, the departments and, you know, why do you need this, why do you need that? I mean, I, you give them many suggestions, you know, for example, why do you need it with so many miles on it, where does that vehicle go, is it going to go here, you know, that kind of stuff. But there's a, there's, they have their protocol that they follow and that's what they do. But I don't want to get into that right now. We do have a process that has been working very well, except for a couple of years where it wasn't heated, okay? And, and then they want to get back to it to understand, you know, these, this isn't a slide through, this is not a ride, these guys don't come in or these department heads don't come in and get a slide. They are, they're asked questions and questions and you know that, and they keep on, you know, to get this thing understood what they need and why they need it. And then you go on the site, you can go to any department head and they usually welcome you with open arms and, you know, you look at the truck that they're looking, I want to replace, and you can ask them questions, how is that used and all that. So I don't think it's, I don't think it's, I think we do an important feature, I mean, whether or not they should be coming in with bona fide quotes, I mean, that would be my suggestion. Bona fide quotes, if you want to, if you want a tractor, what do you need, you know, get a quote, get three quotes. Is it 10, 15, 12,000 or is it your 30,000, you know what I mean? But a bona fide quote is very important in the structure of this whole thing.
I, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the capital improvement committee's recommendations and recommend them to the city council.
We still going to have a discussion?
Is there a second to this motion?
A second.
Motion's been made and second, is there a discussion?
I, I just have a couple of questions if I can ask you, Bill.
Sure, yes, you can.
On the, number 15, traffic light improvement program. We talking about red, red, yellow and green lights, we talking about lights, we talking about the traffic lights themselves?
Right.
Are they going to, is that going to be adding new lights or fixing the ones that don't work now?
Well, the ones, they're coming in, the ones that have been approved, whatever, and those type of things. And then they also have a program where they can look, they're looking at what their needs are.
I don't know of any more lights that have been approved, do you, council?
No, it's not, it's not approved lights, it's the control mechanism. What they historically use is a, is a sensor loop in the pavement and they've gotten away from that. Now they use a video camera that senses motion. So at an intersection where at nighttime, one, one road gets no traffic whatsoever, rather than having the sensors, which don't always work for motorcycles, right, is they use a motion sensor that triggers the lights and they only have a few left in the city to do that.
No, it's not up to us to say.
Just curious, just curious.
Just so you understand, so when you get something like that, you could say, well, I even put it in, but it's not up to us to do it. We have to honor what they're asking for.
I just wanted to know what it was being used for.
Okay, yeah, you know, we have to.
There's been some discussion about traffic lights. I think we're pretty much at the point where there's no money in this budget to do anything with traffic lights. And the types of lights that you're talking about are really expensive.
No, I just, I'm clear. Well, taken. And the city council and the, and the city manager, they could just line it right up.
And then on, I just wanted, Lakeside Avenue, which I'm thrilled to see these things, number two, reconstructions, that's like resurfacing the road, is that what that means?
More than that. It would be, as I understand it, it's looking at the stormwater systems underneath the road.
Which would be number five, water? Is that what that is?
No, stormwater is different than water. Stormwater's the drain system, that's the city's responsibility.
One is what we do and one is what the water department does.
Okay, so, and what's the total station upgrade, what's that? That's line 10 on Lakeside Avenue, you know what that is? I'm just trying to get.
That's, that I don't have. I mean, we have, there's a whole packet on that.
Says DB.
But that's, that's the price fund.
That's the pumping station.
That's the pumping station.
Okay, and that's on Lakeside Avenue, there's a pumping station?
Well, there is, it's, it's off Lakeside Avenue.
Okay.
They're doing, what, what they try to do, and you got to applaud them for the coordination, is Luke and the sewer department and the water department, they sit down, they say, listen, we've really got to do this road. The water department says, great, let's do it all at the same time.
Just wanted to be sure, just curious, that's all. Okay, thank you.
Yes, Mike.
Her process is, we're making, we're recommending this list in this motion to the city council who will work with the city manager to add this to their actual budgeted for CIP program. who'll work with the city manager to add this to their actual budgeted for CIP program.
It's not, it's additive. It's information that they use to, and the city manager develops a budget, a capital budget, and he presents it to the city council.
Just one year at a time?
Correct.
Every year.
You have a, a long-term capital improvement program?
We have a, yeah, this was a six-year, the CIP group looked at a six-year program. This is just next year's recommendations. Typically, what happens from this list is historically, the first five items or so get funded. And then the rest just kind of keep moving up the list.
Usually, usually they, there's funding for the first twelve items. However, that's not including the, the ones that are self-funded by the water department and so on and so forth.
And the place fund, yeah.
People asking questions is very normal, and it's a very good thing. Because this board and other boards in the city change personnel. And it's always in a process of changing. And how the devil can you learn if you don't ask a question? And so, don't, don't feel hesitant in asking a question. You know, we should be able to, somebody here should be able to explain the answer. And if we can't, it's like, whoops, gotta find the answer.
I strongly recommend that if, if you're interested in CIP, attend a meeting or two, you know, this is a published schedule. With the published schedule, they say who comes in what night, who's gonna speak, what department's coming in. And if you're interested in all the departments, fine. If you're not, pick on a department that you wanna listen to, what they, what their needs are. And understand how, what they go through in their presentation when they, you know, when they're trying to make, you know, make the sale, so to speak.
And it's always kicked off here because we'll discuss who on the planning board wants to be a part of that process. So you'll have a good indication.
We usually send, what, two or three persons from the, three people from the planning board, volunteers that wanna be on the, on the CIP, so.
Okay, given this discussion, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor say vote? Any opposed? Any abstention?
I abstain.
One abstention. Excellent, thank you very much. Then that will be sent to the city council. Let's see, updating the procedures of the planning board. Shannon and I have had a discussion, and because of the homework that was assigned last time, everybody's been looking at this. And Shannon has a recommendation as to, that we, it's sort of a joint one. They really need more than just the cursory look in order to bring these up to date because there have been many changes in the RSAs which need to be incorporated into it. And so, there is no critical need at, for time sensitivity, and we'd rather do it right than rather do it in a hurry. And so what we would like to do is to ask if any member of the board here would like to serve with the professional staff as a subcommittee to review these things and come back to the planning board as a whole in either December or January with-
January, February.
January, February. They're much more complete so that we don't need to do these things very often, and it would be nice to have them done just as, as correct as we can get them.
So just to add to that, so these are the rules and regulations for how the planning board operates, how the technical review committee operates, which is the group that puts together the staff report and all the reviews and, and does the preliminary review of all the plans, as well as the minor site plan committee. They haven't been updated since 1998. They're very, very much out of date. They really need a full rewrite. I think it was gonna be very unwieldy to do it with the full planning board. And so I think Warren's idea of having a subcommittee of three or four people to really get these in a good order in order to bring it back to you guys, because I think there's gonna be substantial changes, is gonna be important. So, so I think that's a great idea.
The changes might not be from what we're doing now, but they will be to bring our documents-
Right.
-into a contemporary state in accordance with the, with the city charter and the RSAs also.
So this committee would meet what?
Probably three or four times before we bring it forward to the planning board.
It'd be really nice if one of the real senior members of the board offered to be on here.
I was waiting for that.
Well, I would suggest if you're gonna do that, that you schedule it for the March meeting, the review, or maybe even the April, because I for one would like to get the recommendations, not the Friday before or the Wednesday before, but a week or two before so we could take a look at them in terms of what's, of what's being-
Yeah, maybe even a month interval in there.
Well, I, you know, I don't wanna put more stress on people than they already got 'cause I know you do a lot.
So would anyone, Don, are you-
I'll volunteer.
Well, thank you. Anybody else volunteer? I'll volunteer to be on the, the board also, the subcommittee. If anyone, if you don't-
Those three meetings, I, I would, are we even really on the committee?
No, we're all today, so I think we can do it.
Oh, yeah.
Can we?
Of course you can. Of course you can.
And you're retired, so that'll be fine.
A what?
No, I'm just kidding.
Retired, I wish.
So if you have a chance to think about this, just call Shannon and say, yeah, I'll, I'll join into it. So, so given that, that's the status tonight.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. All business, discussion of the addition of back language under the wetlands and water quality ordinance. It was a presentation we heard last month, and there is a memo that was at your seat with the chairman of the Conservation Commission asking for another month so that they can flesh out and answer the different things that were presented here last, last month. So we don't need to vote on it.
I have a question on what we're doing on that as it relates to the state requirements. Where do we differ from what the state requires? I know we had name streams that we, and I think that's one of the reasons why we didn't have that, or we dropped off the radar, because we went from name streams to then seven, five foot setback. I think the name streams is really what the state talks about. I don't know what they do with a number one, class one stream. I did a little research, and I found that in many cases, many states don't even consider a class one stream. And what that is, it's a stream, it's just further up the line, and it's a very small stream. Sometimes it's not even active at all. So that thinking is really where I, where I'm coming from. Why are we doing what we're doing versus many other states? And I know you and I had a quick conversation on that, Shannon. But I think that we have to understand what that's all about, too. If the state requires us to do something, I'm fine with it because they've researched, that they have the manpower, the understanding of how to do something, DES, et cetera. But, but we're, have to understand why we break off from something like that or why we move forward in a given direction, you know?
I'll certainly bring that to the conservation-
Yeah, and they, and they should be looking at that, what, what a class one is, and compare that, look, bouncing off of many states. Many states don't even consider that today, you know, realistically, so. And I think they're concerned about their water erosion and quality like anybody else is.
You know, I was given a little thought to this board thing, and we had the explanation from the gentleman that was here. And they vaguely started to get into engineering values. And nowhere in the engineering values did I hear anything in regard to the, the height or the topography of the land and the height of a bank to the stream normal level. Because that, that controls the whole thing. So each stream would be unique unto its bank, its topography-
Yep.
...and its flow rate.
Yep.
So I don't see how you could put an across-the-board thirty or forty or fifty-foot thing and say, this is it.
Not anything.
Each one would have to be evaluated based on its particular situation.
We could certainly design something to that effect.
I was around the city afterwards, and I went, I think I was in the hospital, and there was a stream back there. It was a pretty, pretty portable stream. It's not that deep and not that wide. It was waterfall, but it was eight feet down.
That's what I mean.
The bank was eight feet down. And no way in the world you would build on that bank, but it was almost vertical, straight down.
And yet, yet, under the way we were talking, you'd need the, what is it, thirty, thirty feet or, or more? And that stream wouldn't overflow once in a hundred years.
How?
But the banks could be eroded, there's other factors to it.
Right.
But they didn't really explain a lot of that, and I think it was sort of cost over to pass it.
And I think that's why they needed this extra time to be able to bring this information back to you guys.
Yes, which brings me to my question. What's the agenda look like for the January meeting?
Three items on it?
Light, this is normal in, in the winter, applications fall off, and then they pick up again.
Not as late tonight, but-
That's okay, because we're gonna have the tree issue.
Maybe.
And so, and I, I'm just looking at the agenda and I'm going like, you know, if they're looking at, I mean, Dean is really committed to this change. And you can, you could tell it from how he presented it last time, and you can tell it from his memo and what he wants to do. And I'm all fine with listening to him completely. But I, I'm just looking at, at an agenda that accommodates that kind of approach. And if January does, I'm okay with that. But if January doesn't, I just assume here in February because none of it is critical.
Yep, we'll take that into consideration.
Under all business two, continuation of discussion of signatures of notice of actions that was tabled at our November meeting. Our city clerk has come up with a procedure that eliminates the conflict here. And that the procedure is that the, what a notice of action is, it's the official document that is generated by the staff at the conclusion of an action of this board. Once we take a vote, then it generates a notice of action to the applicant saying, here, guys, you can do this. It's, it's a very technical document. And, and I was hesitant as, as, in, of being personally responsible for all the details of that. So what the system is, is that the notice of actions will be sent out to an officer of the board who will review them, converse with the director, and the director would, as she has always done, be the signature on the notice of actions. It accomplishes the check and balance necessary. I thought that was an excellent suggestion and resolves the issue in a way that none of us are, and myself reacting to it, personally responsible for signing a highly technical document.
Should we repeat that again? Shannon will be the responsible person.
No, the, the notice of actions will be generated as they are now, within a strict timetable. What is it, seven days after?
Seventy-two hours.
Seventy-two hours after the, after the meeting. They'll be emailed to an officer, the, generally to the chairman. Look at them, say, looks right to me. And then Shannon would also review it from the technical aspects, and she, as the planning director, would sign the notice of action as she has always done. And I, I thought that was an excellent suggestion from the city clerk.
I support that. We haven't had a problem.
Oh, no, we haven't.
And I think you're pretty thorough, you say, no. Two thought.
Well, if it resolves the issue, I'm all for it.
Okay. Well, it does in a very professional manner. Thank you, sir. Planning Department reports.
Yep, a couple of things. We had our Weir Sherret follow-up for the Plan New Hampshire Sherret process two weeks ago. Very well attended. We had about fifteen Weirs folks come and four Plan New Hampshire folks, and had some really great ideas. We're waiting for that, those finalized reports and plans. That should be in tomorrow or the next day. The master plan advisory team has already reviewed the rest of the report, and I should have the Plan New Hampshire report, I would say by mid-month, by mid-December. We'll be able to bring that to you for review in January, so that was very exciting. We have started the process of the transportation chapter with the Lakes Region Planning Commission, who had some transportation money to help us, and so we decided to take advantage of that, get the chapter done for a little bit less money. As part of that, we've been out doing our road labs. I don't know how many of you noticed last weekend on Weir's Boulevard. We had two days of, of what we call road labs, where we had DPW signs out, asking folks about whether or not they were supportive of sidewalks on Weir's Boulevard, and pointing them to our website. And we have a survey on transportation questions on our website. I know you guys all know that because I emailed you and you've all taken that survey, which is much appreciated. And if you haven't, please do, because we need input as to how people wanna prioritize some of the issues that we've heard in our original, kind of getting out to the community and finding out issues as they relate to transportation. So our second road lab, we were hoping to do this week. With the rain and the ice, we don't wanna impede traffic and make it dangerous, so we may postpone that till next week. That's gonna be downtown and talk about traffic calming and pedestrian safety downtown. And I'll certainly let you know that. The third thing is, I was asked earlier in the meeting to talk about the sidewalk in front of the oak tree in front of Dunkin' Donuts. According to state statute, the ultimate decision-maker on decisions on roads and sidewalks is the city council. The city council made the decision, and I'm sure David will talk about this a little bit, Councilwoman Rounce will talk about this a little bit, to remove that sidewalk. And the council does have the right to do that outside of the purview of the planning board. So I'll let David give the details on that. And that's all I have.
Excellent. Any questions about any projects that's going on? Outstanding. The Lakes Region Planning Commission, one big thing that will impact us all tremendously is, is in Washington, at the House of Representatives level, they are going to, from committee, they're going to be taking a vote that, the appearance is that it will pass. It's a transportation plan. They have been funding it just short term, six months, one year. This one would be a five-year program of, I think it's over three hundred billion that would be allocated. And it will go to the Senate and then to the president. If that, and the indications, and I only know from what I read in the, in the Wall Street, if that passes, it will have a tremendous impact on the states. Because most of our roads and bridges at the state level are funded by the federal government. And so with them having this longer-term horizon and authorization, there will be more funding coming in to New Hampshire. And for the, the planning commission, one of its prime responsibilities for the thirty communities is to make the recommendations as to what roads, what new ones need to be done, scenic byways, all regional aspects. So I expect this to be a major, major improvement for us. And considerable amount of work for the planning commissions and our members. Conservation Commission?
I think we went over that, and Shannon's got something that she wants to bring up.
I do.
Okay.
So the Conservation Commission is working on, or completed in milfoil cleanup of Black Brook based on a donation from the Lake Winnipesaukee Watershed Association. We had divers out in Black Brook for two days doing pulling and vacuuming of milfoil. And they were to do, able to do quite a reach of that brook and get that cleaned up. Part of the Conservation Commission's responsibility is to walk all conservation easements. That's been done for the year. Their volunteers have completed that. And they have welcomed a new member, Richard Christopher, who is a new member and will replace Hillary May, who has moved. And five of the members attended the New Hampshire Association of Conservation Commission's meeting on November seventh, a Saturday, for training.
Excellent. Any questions about the Conservation Commission? Counselor? We're still within your timeframe. Would you have a liaison report for us?
I do. I do. I think Shannon covered the nuts in both of it, but it-
Sorry.
No, it's okay. I appreciate it, thank you. The issue of the tree came before the council at our last meeting, which was last Monday. And relying on a report that it was originally generated back when this first started to become an issue from an author, C. Costonas, who is an arborist, and it did a, what I'll call a preliminary study of the tree. The council voted to remove the sidewalk around the tree in order to enhance the chances that the sea, that the tree would remain healthy. That, in fact, has been done. I was out there today and looked at it. And the pavement has been removed. There was a consensus of the council that there would be a recommendation to the planning board to preserve the tree, if possible, in light of all the conditions. And I think that that recommendation or proclamation, I don't know what they're gonna call it.
Resolution?
Resolution, yeah. Thank you. Can you spell that for me?
No, thank you.
Okay. That there would be a resolution to say, to keep that tree as a monumental oak on Union Avenue in the city of Laconia. I expect that that resolution will come at the December meeting of the council, and
that that resolution will be here before the board, when we meet in January at our next regularly scheduled meeting, so.
So what does that mean? I know there's that oak tree there on Parade Road. An oak tree? A hundred and something.
Yeah, that's a different type of oak tree.
Right, okay. So what, when something's declared like that, monumental?
Hey, you know, I'm not responsible for this terminology.
No, I mean, that's what I'm hearing, I don't, I.
We had that in our.
Trying to understand what it is.
Monumental means hugely important, pretty, and we should keep it. That's what monumental means. I just gave you my ad hoc definition.
Yeah, well, I don't know, I don't know what the, you know, the scope of that definition, if that's it, that's, that's it. So I'm trying to figure out what that all means.
Well, we're going to deal, the planning board's going to deal with the issue in terms of safety issues, preservation's issues, and I'm just telling you what the council's, what the council's feeling, and what they're expressing in terms of how their desire to keep the M, like, 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 oak.
Will the council, yeah, okay, fine. Will the council, council let us know what the cost of doing that is? I mean, it's not that important. I mean, what we got to do to.
I think what we're going to. I think, I think what we've done already is put in a process to determine what the, what the life, what the potential life of the oak is. What it would cost, and I assume we'll get in that report, what it would cost to take whatever measures to preserve the oak, some trimming or stuff like that. Ultimately, any budget issues are going to be council issues, and if it's going to cost a million dollars to save the tree, I don't think the city council is going to vote to save the tree.
But three-quarters of it is okay.
I don't think it's going to be that much money to trim it and throw some fertilizer on it.
But in our site plan approval, which was unanimous by this board, it was required that that tree be preserved.
And the, and the conditions were pretty explicit.
Yes.
They were like, there was no like, you know.
Yeah, we weren't wishy-washy.
The large oak tree near the northeast corner of the property is a monumental shade tree, and as such, shall be protected and maintained during and after construction. So arguably, the way they paved the sidewalk might have impacted the conditions they already had.
The way they paved the exit.
I'm not weighing in on, I'm not weighing in on that. I'm, you know, I'm just telling you, the council, which I supported, wants to do everything it can to save the tree. The issue of, from a planning department perspective, of what we do with the request to remove it, is a planning board issue. And the council's weighing in on what it would like to say.
It's great. Fantastic. Anything else, sir, other than the tree?
What more are you going to weigh in on?
It was a unanimous request that the planning board adjourn as soon as possible.
We're getting there.
The better off we all are, I guess.
Okay, then.
What are you going to weigh in on?
On the tree?
On the tree?
Yeah, once you get all the reports.
Soon as we have these reports.
Well, that's all that they really can do.
What, what we're going to do is, we're going to adopt a resolution, or at least that's likely, at our next meeting, to save the, quote, save the monumental tree.
Yes.
We all get the resolution from the city council at our next regular meeting in January, and what we do with it is what we do with it.
Yeah, and we're the authority as to what will be done with it.
And, yeah, that's right.
Okay.
Just a fault of the city council.
No, 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 they're, I would much rather people tell you what their opinions are before you make decisions, and then, then nail you after they, after you make a decision.
I quite frankly think that the planning board and the city council are working pretty good together these days, and I'd like to see it keep that way.
I agree. Other business to come before the planning board? The minutes, the minutes of a special meeting of November second and the regular meeting of November tenth were distributed to all board members. Any, I would like to hear a motion to accept these minutes.
Motion to accept.
Second.
And motions been made in second.